Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Outer South Community Committee. My name is councillor Oliver Newton, and I will be chairing today's meeting. The Outer South Community Committee covers the Arslan and Robin Hood Ward, Middleton Park Ward, Marley North Ward, Marley South Ward, and Rothwell Ward, and is a committee where ward councillors have the opportunity to discuss and make decisions about services and priorities for the local area, and also consider funding applications for local community projects and youth activities. Could I remind everyone that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the City Council YouTube channel, so that the public can observe the meeting without the need to be present? Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves, and mute your microphone once you have introduced yourself? If we could start from my left, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Zahil Una, I'm the localities officer for the Outer South Community Committee. Thank you.
Jane Patterson, programme manager in the Communities Team.
Afternoon, everybody. Karl Linsley from the Communities Team.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's councillor Karen Renshaw representing Arslan and Robin Hood.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Karen Bruce, Arslan and Robin Hood Ward.
I'm councillor Ryan Taylor for Marley South Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Rob Chesterfield from the Middleton Park Ward.
And I'm Wayne Dixon from the Middleton Park Ward.
Good afternoon. Councillor Pogson Golden from Middleton Park Ward.
Councillor Stephen Hallroyd from Arslan and Robin Hood.
Good afternoon. Jane Senior, councillor for Marley South.
Afternoon. I'm Robert Finnigan, I'm a councillor for the Marley North Ward.
Good afternoon. Simon Brown, councillor for Marley North Ward.
Good afternoon. Councillor Diane Chapman from Rothwell Ward.
Good afternoon. Councillor Conrad Hartbrook, also Rothwell Ward.
Good afternoon. Andy Booth, clerk to the committee.
And I'd better mention councillor Oliver Newton from Marley South Ward. Can the clerk please run through items, agenda items, one to five, please?
Thank you, Chair. Under item number one, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under item number two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the press and public. Under item number three, there are no formal late items. There has been some supplementary information which has been published prior to the start of the meeting, which includes some additional funding applications to be considered as part of the finance report. Moving on to item number four, could I ask members if they've got any interest to declare? I'll take that silence as a no. Moving on to item five, we've got apologies for absence from councillors Gettings and Galton today. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks for that, Andy. Item six is open forum. At the discretion of the Chair, a period of up to 10 minutes may be allocated at each ordinary meeting for members of the public to make representations or to ask questions on matters with the terms of reference of the Community Committee. No member of the public shall speak for more than three minutes in the open forum, except by permission of the Chair. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? I see none. Agenda item seven, the Chair's role profile.
Thank you, Chair. Item seven is the Community Committee Chair's role profile. So, as you all are aware, over the past 18 months, there's been a Community Committee review, several member workshops, and one of the requests was that there was a role profile created for the Chair of the Committee. So, you will file, take it, you've read the report, it's there, and a role profile for the Chair is attached, indicating their responsibilities. So, I'll take it as read, but if there are any questions?
Thanks for that, Jane. Does anybody have any questions on that agenda item? I see no questions. And then, agenda item number eight, Community Committee co-opted member profile.
Again, as part of the review, members looked at, the Members' Panel, workshop panel, looked at the role of co-optees on the Committee. Some Committees in the city do have co-optees on their Community Committee. They can be from third sector organisations, or invited by members on to the Community Committee. So, again, we've just attached the role profile for co-opted members there for your consideration. So, again, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thanks for that, Jane. Any questions on that, guys? I see none. Agenda item nine, Community Committee Champions Profile.
So, again, as part of the Community Committee review that we've been undertaking over the past 18 months or so, we re-looked at the Community Committee Champion roles. So, we now have four Champion roles, and attached with this report should be role profiles for each of the four. Children's Services, Community Safety, Health Wellbeing and Adults and Social Care, and the final one, which is Environment. So, we didn't continue with the one that, the Jobs and Skills one, which Member Workshop had said they didn't want to carry on with that, and that these were the four that were felt to be the most appropriate for the Community Committees to work on. The procedures following this, once the Community Committee Champions have been agreed, they will meet as a group of eight with the executive board member, and from then on, priorities will be set with the Chairs and the Community Champions. So, councillor Newton, do you want to take? We had nominations for the Community Champions.
Yeah, so, two nominations so far. Councillor Karen Renshaw for the Champion of the Children's Services Delivery Group, councillor Emma Pogson Golden for Health Wellbeing and Adult Social Care. I can take nominations now for Community Safety and Environment, if anybody wishes to put themselves forward for that. And obviously, I just need to remind you if there's any other interest in the other ones that have been nominated already.
To put one of their Champions up, seeing as everybody, every other group, I think, has contributed so far, apart from Lib Dems, so I'll do Community Safety, I'm sure the Lib Dems would be delighted to do Environment. Excellent. Great doing business with you.
Councillor Hallroyd cares? Councillor Chapman? Environment, yes? So, is everyone all in agreement with that? And just to recap them, seeing as I've had no objections to that, Children's Services is councillor Karen Renshaw. Health and Wellbeing and Adult Social Care is councillor Emma Pogson Golden. Community Safety is councillor Robert Finnigan. And Environment is councillor Diane Chapman. I see no objections to that, and everyone seems to be in favour of that. Yep, I take that as all in favour, thank you. So, moving on. Agenda item 10 is now to the Outer South Community Committee Delivery Group. Nomination, sorry.
So, as mentioned there, the next step is for the executive board member to meet with the eight Community Committee Champions across all eight Community Committees. But from an Outer South point of view, what's now been requested is that we have a delivery group for each of those themes. So, those delivery groups will be chaired by the Community Committee Champion for that theme, and we'll have five members on them, one from each ward, which includes the Champion. So, what we would request is that members from all five wards put forward people for the delivery groups. I would also add, if that becomes too much, too difficult for this, we could take it out of the meeting and do it afterwards, and let people decide what they would like to be on. But yeah, it's one per ward, so if there's any particular delivery group you would like to be involved in. Prior to this review, you would have had subgroups, but now they're called delivery groups.
Does anyone have any comments on that for officers?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to ask if we're going to be able to have officers attending on the subgroups that we represent, because previously, we used to have quite a number of officers attending each subgroup, but over the years, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but they have sort of dwindled off. So, it would be nice to see some officers there who are involved with those specific areas of service to deliver, so that we can take things back to our communities.
I would like to just endorse this new review that's happened across Community Committees, in that that is why a delivery group will have a nomination from each ward, so that that can be pushed in front of the executive board member. So, I agree with you, councillor Renshaw, that this is a good forum to do that, unless any council officers have any different views.
No, that's fine. I think that's something you can take up with your executive board member.
Councillor Finnigan?
Very, very briefly, just to, in an unusual step, agree with councillor Renshaw, I don't think I've done that for the last 20 odd years, but he's absolutely right on, I know, probably the last. I'm not mellowing, I don't think. If we're not going to get officer support, then certainly from my point of view, and taking into account my colleagues will agree with it, if officers don't turn up, we'll cancel the meeting. No point in this meeting and discussing our own nables with each other. Officers need to support it, if it's not just to be a virtual championing of these particular issues. And certainly, speaking to colleagues, I think the disillusionment, the reason that you haven't got people volunteering left, right, and centre here, is those of us who have been on a while know damn well that you set up these subgroups, and we don't get any officer support, we don't get any officer feedback, so it's utterly pointless waste of our time when we're already, all of us very busy with other things. So, if the officers are out there, I should certainly be cancelling my meeting.
Thanks for that feedback, councillor Finnigan. Obviously, I don't think making an appointment at this meeting is efficient, because I think colleagues need to go away and have a chat about it, once they've understood what the role entails, and what the priorities are for each ward, and who has a point to make on that, so as long as officers are happy with that.
Yep, that's fine. We'll take that, and we'll get in touch with everyone.
Thanks for that. Item number 11, Community Committee Appointments 25/26.
Thank you, Chair. This is the annual Community Committee Appointments Report, to make the appointments to outside bodies, cluster partnerships, local care partnerships, and to the Corporate Parenting Board. If you can take it to paragraph six on page 32, and I'll just quickly run through each post we have. First off, we have Archbishop Margerson Fund, and there's just one vacancy to fill on that this year, and it's for a Drigglington Primary School representative, and we've received a nomination for Kerry Sodden, who's the head of school. Can I just ask members if they're agreeable to that? Yep, thank you. Moving on, next one is Bell Isle Senior Action. Last year was councillor Pogson Golden. Is that to stay the same? Yep. Then on to Middleton Elderly Aid, councillor Pogson Golden again? No. Councillor Chesterfield, right. Bell Isle Tenant Management Organisation, I've got councillor Dixon and councillor Pogson Golden. Still to stay the same? Yep. On to the clusters for Beeston, Cottingley, and Middleton. I've got a vacancy for that, which would be a Middleton Park member.
Can I just, on the clusters, so I think I was assigned one last year, and they've still yet to email me. Do they even exist?
Right, we do have this question quite a lot. The clusters were given the information from Children's Services every year, and they're the ones that they ask us to make appointments to. Now, if you can tell me which specific cluster it is, I will feedback to them that that's not happened, and I sent up their records. But if it's a cluster, we've had a vacancy before where members have decided not to appoint, because that hasn't happened. So, I'm assuming that's possibly the case with this Beeston, Cottingley, and Middleton one. So, do you wish to make an appointment to it, or?
Yeah, I don't mind doing that one, I've filmed.
Okay. So, that's councillor Pogson Golden for the Beeston, Cottingley, and Middleton cluster. Moving on, the next one is the Joint Extended Schools and Services Cluster, which is currently councillor Pogson Golden, and again for this year. Yep, okay. Moving on to the Marley cluster, we've got councillors Finnigan and councillor Senior on that, and there's also a vacancy at the moment. Are you willing to continue on that yet, and do we have a nomination for the vacancy?
Councillor Brown?
Are members happy for that? Yeah.
For that one, but...
If there's two nominations, then we'd have to, I see, committed to take a vote on that. You still wishing to?
Yeah, I might too. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, that's councillor Taylor as well. Right, moving on to the Children's Services Cluster for Rothwell. We've currently got councillors Chapman, Galton, and Renshaw happy to stay. Yep. Moving on to Local Care Partnerships, Garth, Kipaks, and Rothwell, we've got councillor Galton happy for that to stay. Yep. Local Care Partnership for Marley, councillor Finnigan to stay on? Yep. Local Care Partnership for Inner South Communities, councillor Chesterfield.
Yeah, that's fine.
Stay, yeah. And the Bramley, Wirtley, and Middleton Local Care Partnership, councillor Dixon. Yep. Okay. And the final one is the Corporate Parenting Board, which is normally the Children's Champion. I've got councillor Hallroyd down as was on last year.
I would like to step down this year, I just think it would be better coming under the children's subgroup, one of their members or the Chair, rather than someone that's not involved in the subgroup.
Okay, so councillor Renshaw. Just to remind members that any members invited along to the Corporate Parenting Board, should they wish to do so, and if they want to contact me, and I'll let them know. Okay. So, that concludes that report. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks for doing that so efficiently. Agenda item 12, Outer South Community Committee Forward Plan 25/26.
Thank you. So, again, and this has come through the Members' Working Group, we've now got a forward plan for each Community Committee. So, this is attached at appendix on page 43. So, this will document for the Outer South Community, the new Outer South Community Committee, all its functions for the coming year. So, that'll be the Champions, the delivery groups, all your Wellbeing, YAF, and SIL, and capital budgets, as well as any engagement activity that's going to take place over the coming year. So, your Youth Summit, and any other engagement events that we hold throughout the year. So, it's just a way of capturing it, and also seeing how your funding is addressing the themes that the Champions are leading on. So, unless anyone has any questions?
Councillor Finnigan?
Certainly, if I'm the Community Safety Champion, then I suspect the city's priorities are something that aren't going to interest me at all, really, because the city's priorities, generally, are entirely different from my priorities. For example, movement of police officers, or PCSOs, they tend to be shifted from our areas into the inner. Now, that may well be a city priority. It's not one of those things that we're going to be discussing and debating as a local priority. Local priorities are likely to clash with city priorities, certainly on community safety, when we're looking at the number of police officers that have been allocated to our particular wards, and how they compare to other places in the city. I mean, if we were to look at things like safety cameras, again, we'd be having a different view, I suspect, to safety cameras than the city would. Treatment of antisocial behaviour, aggressive begging, all those other issues, I suspect we would have different priorities to the city priorities. So, and I'm laying down a marker here, unless those city priorities fit with our local priorities, then we'll be discussing local priorities, and local priorities entirely and utterly at community safety, and I'm sure colleagues on the Community Safety Committee would agree with that approach.
Thanks for that, councillor Finnigan. I think it's a really good point, and obviously, you can take that to your working group as Champion of that forum. Officers, do we have any other comments? Any other questions from members? No. Thanks for that. Item number 13, Outer South Community Committee Finance Cover Report.
Thank you, Chair. I would take it that members have read the Finance Cover Report, which obviously stipulates the Community Committee going from 10 to 8, and it also states that from the 22nd of May to this Community Committee meeting, there's been no funding decision made, which is the whole idea that everything being brought to the Finance Report for discussions and approval at this meeting today. Any questions on that from any members?
I don't think there is none. And if you're happy, we can move on to item number 14, which is the Community Committee Finance Report.
Thank you, Chair. That's me again. If members can go to page 53, paragraph 16, we have got the minimum conditions for this Community Committee, and paragraph 16 relates to sections A to D. Has any members got any questions in relation to that?
I'll give you 10 seconds to read that, and if there's no questions, then we can move on. I see no hands or anything. Yeah, we can move on.
Thank you, Chair. Moving on to page 54, paragraph 21, if you look at table one, it's got the figure of £126,634, that's the income for this year, and if you look at table one, there are some projects listed there, which have already been approved. This came on the back of the email from councillor Harland for the 10K that was allocated, so that's what's come out there.
Councillor Finnigan, question?
Very, very briefly, it's just on the first item at page 54, St George's Day Parade and Community Event, which I note is financed by Marley North and Marley South. Now, it was brilliant to see our colleagues from Middleton Park at our celebrations, as it was to see our Rothwell colleagues and Captain Pugwash along to celebrate.
Councillor Finnigan, can I stop you there and just keep it brief, please, the comments?
Very, very briefly, I just wondered if they might wish to contribute, since they attended and enjoyed and benefited from it. How's did their social media feed?
Thank you for that question, councillor Finnigan. That particular one was for the event already this year, and I understand that councillors are planning for the event for next year in April, and that's something that could be discussed at a later date.
Thanks for that.
Okay. So, moving along to paragraph 24, I would like members to approve some community engagement budget of £300 per ward. This is for meeting rooms and refreshments and stuff like that.
Yeah, so does anybody have any views on this? This is obviously to help with the Champions' community engagement. Are we happy to approve that? I see lots of nods. So, that looks like a good idea. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Moving along to paragraph 25, so we're moving along now to all these projects that are coming through. So, the first one is Arslan and Robin Hood for some extra litter bins in their ward area, and that's listed, the locations of the bin. Is everybody okay with that?
Any views on that, members? I see none.
Thank you very much. Moving along to paragraph 27, Drigglington Bypass, and that's the highways cleansing from our Marley North councillors. Everybody okay with that one? Okay, moving along to paragraph 28, Leeds was CCTV, and that only covers one ward, that's Marley South, and that's £1,000. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. That looks okay. No members' questions, I keep?
Okay. Moving along to paragraph 29, which is the Middleton and Bell Isle Festival live switch-on. That's for November this year. Our Middleton Park councillor is okay with that. Just a suggestion with that one, for the Middleton Park councillors, you can use your SIL if you want to, as opposed to your Wellbeing Revenue. Which budget would you like that coming out of? You can let me know outside of this meeting if you want to have a discussion. That's fine, not a problem. Thanks very much. Moving along to paragraph 30, which is the Marley Elderly Action, that's for the garden maintenance programme, and that's touching on Arslan and Robin Hood, Marley North, and Marley South, and that is £3,000 each for the respective three wards, a total of £15,000. Is everybody okay with that one? Excellent. Moving along to paragraph 31, which is the Woodville Square shrubbery clearance, and that is for some land that's owned by Leeds City Council Housing Department, and that has implication on the Middleton Park Ward, and I know members have already been in discussion with housing colleagues with that one, and that's £1,230. Is that okay? Okay. Paragraph 32, which is BM Wellbeing Village, it's a project which covers quite a number of wards in the Leeds area, and did the funding work out on the basis of the attendance, in terms of percentage attendance that they had at the last event, and it worked out that Middleton Park contribution would be £39.50. Is everybody okay with that one?
Yep.
Middleton Park councillors, we'll go on to councillor Dixon.
We don't really want to put our money, no.
On which one, councillor Dixon, sorry? Which one? Which number?
32.
32, yeah.
What about the rest of the members on that one? Paragraph 32? We don't? Okay, fair enough. That's okay. Thanks very much for that. Thanks very much for that. Moving along to paragraph 33, which is the Health and Wellbeing and Bollywood Dancing. It's a fitness class in a local community centre and I know some Middleton Park councillors have been in discussion with this particular group. Is everybody okay with that one?
So, we do support this. Under the proviso it is delivered in our ward?
Yes it is and the attendance question, the majority of them are coming from the Middleton Park Ward.
There was some debate whether or not it would be delivered in Onslit, so as long as it can be confirmed that it's delivered in Middleton or Belle Isle, we'll support it.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay, moving along to paragraph 34, which is the Prince Philip Fab Centre. A really good Friday club for people with learning disabilities and physical disabilities and it's a citywide project and they've worked out the contribution of each ward which equates to £101.79. Are we all okay with that one?
Again, we don't support this from our ward funds, just because we think there's more local accessible facilities that people can access.
Okay, this has implications on the other four wards, so can we have any objections or support from the other ward members?
Any comments number 34?
Number 34, Fab.
Does anyone have any questions? Any other members, given Middleton's dissent to that? It says it's taking place in all the wards covered.
It's basically Prince Philip Centre which is just off Scott Hall Road on the A61.
Councillor Chapman?
But it's citywide, they have a minibus and they pick people from across the city.
Can I just clarify, this is, it's £508 divided by five wards?
Five wards, that's right. £101.79 per ward.
Then Rothwell would support it.
Yes, they've worked this out on the membership numbers from each ward.
So ultimately, if there is a disagreement across the committee, it has to go to a vote. So does everybody, is everybody nodding on that?
Couldn't we just reduce the amount?
Say that again councillor Dixon.
I'm proposing that we just, if everyone's agreeable, just don't give them the £100 from our ward and give them the rest, if everyone wants to fund it.
So the committee can take a vote on that proposal as to whether it only comes out of every ward but for Middleton Park and is split four ways accordingly? Councillor Hallroyd case?
Just one thing with that, if we are pulling a ward out of it, are we going to have a guarantee that the residents from that ward are not going to be provided the transport that the rest of us are paying for and things, just so that the money is... Because obviously I don't think it's fair if we fund a thing that's citywide and then a ward pulls out but their residents still benefit from us paying for it in that particular ward, councillors not wanting to.
Councillor Dick?
Councillor Dixon?
So what I would say is, this came to the Inner South Community Committee for the last couple of years and we haven't funded it and they've kept going. Just saying that I suspect that'd be the same, because I know they put bids in across the city in every community committee.
Okay, just to clarify, if Middleton Park aren't going to fund it, are we saying that £508.93 is then divided by the other four? Or are we saying that Middleton Park won't fund it and will divide the £508 by...
We choose to divide it by £179.
Councillor Ryan Taylor, he had the hand up.
I was just interested to know the reason of rationale for not supporting it.
Councillor Dixon?
Yeah, I'm happy to share. So, we feel that it's the other side of Leeds and there's facilities near us, like for example an Onslit club that delivers similar projects. So we just don't think it's going to impact many of our residents and it's only £100, but it's £100 that we should be spending wisely and I think £100 could reach a lot more people than they will with that £100.
Councillor Atbrook?
I think, if I draw a comparison here, when we did the gardening scheme and Rothwell withdrew its support, we lost access to that facility for our residents. I think it's difficult to do this because we don't know, we haven't got any data as to whether any of our residents are using this facility. I sort of agree with Wayne, it is the other side of, well, it's central Leeds really, isn't it? But it's the other side of central Leeds, it's kind of more east Leeds. And I think it's important to know where it is, but I do think that I wouldn't support, oh we'll just find £500 from the other four wards because that's, again, doesn't... As councillor Hallroyd case said, if a ward pulls out, they shouldn't enjoy the benefits of the thing. It's difficult for us to have this conversation because we don't know who's getting the benefits.
That's fine. So is everybody in agreement that we move on and defer this until we found out some further information for elected members? All in agreement with that? Councillor Hallroyd, yeah?
I was just going to say, yeah, I'd like to, like we've done with the reservoir walk, the gardening scheme, I'd like to see the figures from each, how many people attend from each ward and things. Is it there? I think we just need a bit more time to look into this one because it's, I don't think it's come in this way before to us.
That's fine, so we can, everyone's nodding, so I take that as we're happy to defer that to the, until we've received some further information. Thank you for that.
Okay, sorry councillor, do you have a question? Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so moving along the report, paragraph 35 is the Skegness Trip for the Odds and Sods Club at Middleton Park and that is £745. Are we in agreement with that one?
Yep, all in agreement.
Okay, paragraph 36 is Broom Nut Pension Club and that's another trip to Southport and that is £695 for Middleton Park. Is everybody okay with that one?
Yep, all nodding, I'll take that as it, okay.
Okay, moving along to paragraph 37 is Leeds City Council Youth Services for some special provision with young people in the Morley South area and the cost of that is £500. Are you okay with that one?
Yep, everyone looks to be... Councillor Finnigan question?
Yeah, could someone explain to me what think sue vidi biriara or sverifi mole sauce might be? Because I have to say, what we're trying to do here with youth services, make sure kids can boil an egg. This is one about, you know, trying to culturally expand their ways of looking at things. I'm all for, especially young men, being focused on to try and make sure that they are offered opportunities to learn how to cook things, but I'm not sure it's necessarily selling itself and even me, and I do a bit of cooking, have no idea what think sue vidi biriara, it's not selling itself in any shape.
So to move this swiftly forward councillor Finnigan.
If Morley South colleagues want it, I would just say it needs to be focused on young people learning how to cook. Ordinary stuff, not sverifi mole sauce, whatever that might be. And I feel sorry for the mould for being anything on it.
Councillor Finnigan? Thank you. So, do colleagues want to defer? I'm looking all around. Councillor Senior, are you in support of that? Yeah, Morley South colleagues are in support of that? Councillor Taylor?
When I looked at it, it looked about purchasing cooking equipment and things like that. Morley South has Morley Academy that's got almost a multimillion pound cooking facility within the high school. So if they're going to use part of that budget to buy cooking facilities and things like that, can we not lean on Morley Academy that's got this brand new facility that would serve a lot better people for a lot less money? Or the same amount of money but they'd be able to incorporate tenfold the amount of people.
Councillor Finnigan?
Very, very briefly, it's based at Lewisham Park Youth Centre, which I'm sure councillor Taylor will figure out is the only community centre in the most deprived section of Morley. Now, I'm all for all sorts of activities taking place there. If you're hoping that the academies are likely to open up their facilities there, then I think that's somewhat unlikely. To be honest, if they're teaching them the basic skills, providing the basic mechanics for them to do that, then I withdraw my concern about the mould.
I just want to move this swiftly on then. Given that it's a committed decision, can I have a show of hands of all in favour please? That's passed. Thank you for that. Moving on.
Okay.
Apologies, at the beginning of this report, we should have explained to council officers that we are splitting the wellbeing budget based on ward allocations. Is everybody in agreement with that? Or do we want to have a committee vote on it? Are we all in agreement? I see nobody objecting to that, so we're all happy? Yep, I take that as we're all happy in terms of the ward allocation split. Is that okay?
Okay, moving along to paragraph 38 is the Youth Activities Fund Budget. Just to let you know that the allocated budget for the five wards for the Outer South Community Committee is £56,905 and we have had £329... £329.25 already approved for the tennis programme at Dalfmough Park. Do you want to come in Chair?
Yeah, sorry, I just want to come in on that. The YAF is also being split in relation to ward allocations. Is everybody happy with that? The same as the wellbeing? Yes, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that for officers.
Thank you Chair for the clarity. Moving along to the youth activity part of the finance report, paragraph 40 is the Outer South Breeze Event. This one covers the Arzy and Robin Hood Ward, Morley North, Morley South and Rothwell. So it's for four Breeze Events, each Breeze Event costing £3,850 and the total amount proposed by Breeze is £15,400. Members happy with that one?
Councillor Hallroyd?
Just one quick one. I know they might not be able to do it for this year, but last year when we had the debrief from Breeze, we asked about the quiet event that they put on the hour before, which usually moves round per ward. We asked if they could come back to us with a figure for us if we were going to cover one of those every one Breeze. I don't think this application has that in this year. Can we go back to them to ask them to provide us with the funding figure so that next year we can look at that? Because I know ourselves and Rothwell especially were keen to put that event on in both wards rather than it just move from one to the other.
Thank you very much for that councillor Hallroyd. I do know that they do have provision in some of the Breeze Events but we could certainly have a conversation outside of this meeting to make sure that it's included in next year's application form. Thank you for that. Moving along to paragraph 41, Dazzle, this covers the Tingley and Rothwell Dance Programme. So the total cost of this project is £3,059.10, which would mean it would equate to £1,529.55 for Arzy and Robin Hood and Rothwell. Are you guys happy with that?
Yeah, I see no objections.
Thank you for that. Moving along to paragraph 42, the Dazzle Ward and Dance Programme covering Middleton Park Ward and that is proposed at £3,366. Our colleagues, our ward members in Middleton Park have got a question.
Councillor Dixon?
Yeah, did you get a response about doing a year's funding?
Thank you there councillor. You did ask that question. I haven't had a reply yet for that. It is something that we can look into. This is an application form that was sent beforehand for this particular amount, but we can defer it if you're not happy for any state at the moment or we can ask them to redo the application form.
Councillor Dixon?
Can I just make a proposal that we double the funding to give them a year's funding?
Do we need any clarification on whether that funding is available or can the committee take a vote?
Well, on the basis of the application form, it's £7,700. What I'll have to do is ask the organisation to resubmit an application if you're saying you want them to do extra sessions. Because the application in its entirety at the moment is on this amount, obviously the amount will change and we would have to go for a decision again.
Councillor Emma?
Councillor Emma? Yeah, we did actually request them to come back and give us a 12 month... Yeah, so can we defer this until they come back with the 12 month? It's just, I know they're going to come back in another six months, but if we've got things that have gone through for a year, then we know where we stand, that's all.
That's fine councillor, we'll defer this one and we'll ask them to redo the application form for a 12 month period and we'll go for a decision then.
So is everyone happy to defer? Can I have some nods of heads? Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Paragraph 44 is the Youth Service covering the Outer South wards, Rothwell, Arzy and Robin Hood, Morley South and Morley North. And it's, the amount proposed there is...
Excuse me, I think we've missed, have we missed one?
Sorry, sorry.
53.
Sorry, my apologies, my apologies. Just to go back, Breeze in the Park for Middleton Park and Cooper's Field are the two events covering the Middleton Park and Belle Isle area, which equates to £7,700.
Are we all happy with that? Any opinions? No, no objections, thank you.
Okay, moving along to paragraph 44, which is the Youth Service for the Outer South area and that's covering all the wards with the exceptions of Middleton Park and these are for the Youth Services Activity Days and the amount proposed is £7,735.28.
I see no objections, but I want to put my support on record for the Youth Service across Leeds and I'm sure colleagues will nod their heads at that. Thanks.
Okay, just to let members know that we're still awaiting figures for the wellbeing and the Youth Activity Fund from the carried forward figures of last year. Our financial system has changed, so there's that to add on as well. Hopefully, once I have the finance report for the next round of Community Committee meetings, those figures will be inclusive in the actual report. Okay, right, moving along to the Capital Fund Budget. Again, we haven't got the figures for that because of some system changes and same with the SIL. And when we come to the next round of Community Committee meetings, I'll be able to update all members on the budgets for those two particular parts. However, for the Community Infrastructure Levy, we have got three projects, paragraph 48, 49 and 50. And the first one, paragraph 48, is the Heritage Village Public Open Space. Some landscape improvements through our Parks and Green Spaces colleagues within Leeds City Council and that covers the Arzy and Robin Hood Ward and that's for a sum of £26,200. Our members from Arzy and Robin Hood, are you okay with that one?
Yep, all happy with that? Thank you.
Okay, I'm moving along to paragraph 49, which is the Belle Isle and Middleton Christmas Lights. This is from the Leeds Lights. This is from the Leeds Lights and that equates to fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-nine pounds. And I know members have raised some questions in terms of the location of the lighting units. And we have got a meeting with these lights and we've got a site visit plan for that.
Can we defer this until that then, then please?
We certainly can. Thank you very much for that.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask a question on that? Because we all, in the Outer South, we planted some Christmas trees quite early last year. Well, it was about March time in the hope that they would grow. However, they've died. Are those trees going to be replaced and will that have to come out of our budget again?
Thank you there, councillor, for that question. Yes, we'll have to put an application form, in a commission application form with our forestry department and they can purchase a Christmas tree for you. That's normally the round about September, October time. September, October time is when we put the application in for that.
I just want to make sure that the trees get planted before the lights go on because Leeds Lights came round to put the lights on the trees before the trees were actually planted one year. So I don't want the same error again. I want to make sure the trees are well planted.
No worries, we'll look into that. Obviously, there's some conversations that need to take place between our forestry department and Leeds Light to make sure that the planting happens first and then the lights are installed afterwards. Thank you for that, councillor. That's a valid point you've raised there. Thanks. Okay. Moving along to paragraph fifty, which is the Coopers Field Safety Works. Again, that's from our Middleton Park councillors with Leeds City Council Parks and Green Spaces. And that is for ten thousand seven hundred.
Counsel Hallroyd.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry about that. Just to go back to the Christmas lights and trees, I know that councillor Renshaw made. Can we just make sure that someone has gone through from Parks or Leeds Lights just to survey our trees in time for us to order them if we need to? Because obviously, we were told that the ones we had planted this year weren't big enough, which is why we held off planting them until now, until later on, because they were supposed to go in last year for Christmas. So we need them to go around and survey the trees to make sure they're large enough for the lights so that we can order the trees in time if not.
Thanks for that, councillor Hallroyd. I think, Emma, did you have a question on this next one? Okay, sorry. Yeah, move on, thanks.
Okay, so going back to paragraph fifty with the Coopers Field Safety Works from our Middleton Park colleagues, ten thousand seven hundred. Are you okay with that one? Any questions?
Counsel Dixon.
We think we are. And the reason that we only think is because we've not actually seen the application before today. But we did have a discussion with PAX, so we think we know what the work is. So we kind of want to approve it because we want it doing, but we're not hundred percent sure because we don't see any application.
Counsel Dixon, thank you for that point that you've raised there. What we can do is we can defer it if you want. And then I can set up a meeting with our colleagues from Parks and Green Spaces who could go into detail with this application form. Have you already had the meeting?
Sorry, we've got a meeting with them tomorrow, but we haven't seen an application form. Have you got an application form from them already? Can you forward it on to us quickly?
Yes, I can, yes, I can.
And then we can make a decision?
If...
Sorry, it's just that we know what works, we've asked for being done, but we just want to make sure it is actually the works that we've asked for being done and not something else.
That's fine, councillors. I'll email you all the three Middleton Park Ward councillors with the application form.
Conrad.
Just to keep this moving forward, could we perhaps agree that, provided the Middleton Park councillors are satisfied that it's what they've asked for, that as a group we support it?
Yeah, are we okay to agree that in principle? And does everyone nod at that as a committee? Yes? Happy with that? I'm happy with that, that we've all agreed that. Yes.
Just one more point.
Counsel Dixon.
I don't know if anybody else gets a bit, how can I put it? Perplexed. With how long some projects with parks can take. So I wondered if we could just put on the provisor that it's finished before the end of the financial year? Because often it's not.
I don't know whether you can put a provisor on there, but I'm sure that offices will go away. But as long as we've, as a committee, in principle approved that. I appreciate your point, councillor Dixon. But as you can appreciate with the, how everything works, it might not necessarily be available, but I'm sure that council offices will go away and it's noted for the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Chair, for that. That concludes the formal part of the finance report. However, we have got a couple of supplementary items. Are they at the back of the report?
I think all members have a handout. There's some council members down there that haven't got a handout. So... There are two available here. Just going to have a slight pause whilst that's given. Looks like everybody's got it now, so we can move on.
Thank you. So we've got a couple of supplementary items and a couple of application forms have come through. One is for the Arsey and Robin Hood Ward, which is for two notice boards. One at East Arsey Community Centre and the other one at East and West Arsey Allotments. And that comes to four thousand two hundred pounds, two thousand one hundred each. They are the bigger notice boards that hold sixteen sheets of A4 paper. Are councillors in agreement for that one?
I just need to check with my ward colleagues. Just give me a second. Okay, we'll just have a slight pause. So the notice...
Mend it so that it's a smaller sized stamp at the allotment.
For one of them, yeah.
At the allotment?
Yeah, the smaller one.
A smaller one?
And the bigger one at the community centre.
Thank you for the feedback there, councillors. I'll take those recommendations on board in terms of the amendments to the notice boards. And then moving along to the other item, which is for the Rothwell Ward, which is Rothwell Autumn Festival. And the amount proposed for that is one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight.
Is everyone in agreement with that on the committee? Yeah, I see lots of nodding heads. Thank you.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep, that's agreed. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to go back to the finance report. Unfortunately, I've just made a mistake. I've just realised, my colleague's just mentioned it to me. So can I ask members to go back to paragraph forty-four for the Youth Services Activity Days? Okay, this covers all the four wards with the exception of Middleton Park. It doesn't cover Middleton Park, this particular one. And I said that the amount proposed was seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-five twenty-eight. That was incorrect. The actual amount is twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty divided by the four wards. Any questions on that, members?
Yeah, has anybody got any questions on that? Are we all happy with that? It's at page sixty-one, paragraph forty-four. Is that the right one? Yep?
Yep.
Yep. Everyone happy with that split as revised? Yep, I see no objections. Thank you.
Thank you there, Chair. That concludes the finance report and the supplementary items. Has members got any questions in relation to what I've gone through?
No, I don't see any questions. In that case, agenda item number fifteen, dates, times of the meetings, twenty-five, twenty-six, Clark to present.
Thank you, Chair. The proposed dates for the remainder of the year are Monday twenty-ninth of September, Monday first of December and Monday second of March twenty-twenty-six, which follow on from the dates we met in the previous year. If members are happy to support those dates, Chair, what were the agreements for timing for the meetings for the future? Are you still wanting to remain at four PM or was there discussion to change those?
Has anybody got any opinions on change of times or is four o'clock okay? Bearing in mind that the meetings will be a little bit quicker going forward, does anybody have any views?
Are all the meetings going to be out there in the civic hall or are they going to be held in the Outer South?
All held at the civic hall as live stream facilities are available and council offices are present.
Can I ask that we don't do it on Prom Week?
Counsel Finnigan.
Are we obliged to drag ourselves, as we had to do, to the civic hall today, which was an absolute and utter nightmare? If this council is committed to localising things and local democracy, then we ought to be out in our particular communities, not dragged here at this stage. Who says we have to have it at the civic hall? Because quite frankly, we should be going out and at least getting a feel for the Miggy Ward and Arsey and Robin Hood and Rothwell. Although I'm quite happy to skip Rothwell, but the Morley North and Morley South wards. And that seems to me the most anti-democratic thing that we could possibly do, dragging us into the centre when we're supposed to be about decentralisation. It's utterly bizarre.
So what we can do is we can obviously agree the dates at this meeting. And then if colleagues want a further discussion about that going forward. Obviously, I just want to respond to councillor Finnigan in that the accessibility to the public is available via live stream on YouTube. And obviously, council offices can be present. And obviously, the facilities of the civic hall might be more efficient as well. Councillor?
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying about making it accessible via the live stream. But it really precludes a lot of people from being able to come to the meeting. If that's what we want to do, you know, if we want people to be able to come and speak at the beginning, then they're probably not going to do it, holding meetings at the civic hall. So I agree with councillor Finnigan on this occasion. I think it was a good thing that we used to have the meetings moving around the Outer South into all the different sections and areas.
Councillor Chesterfield.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think, we actually talked about this at the pre-meeting that we had previously. And I think on the back of those that were here on that meeting, it was agreed that the civic hall, one, yes, it's central, it's Leeds-based. From all the different areas of the city, i.e. the different wards, it would be the easier for people to use public transport to come into the city rather than having to travel across the city into the different wards. I take on board what the other comments have said. I think in some respects that there is many advantages of it taking place in individual wards, but I think the disadvantages for those from other wards wanting to attend, given the restrictions to travel, pose a barrier. And also the experience from the community committees that have taken place, certainly in the previous, Inner South, Middleton Park Ward was part of before, is that the numbers attending were very low anyway for members of the public. Maybe we can sort of have a joint, one in the ward, another meeting taking place here going forward, maybe an option.
I think we also have to bear in mind as well for the business meetings that two of them were at Morley Town Hall. So obviously, the next practical example would, practical preference would be the civic hall. Councillor Senior, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with Robert. This is the first meeting I've been and there's no public here where we've been in communities. Even though there's only like six or seven, there's nobody here today because it's so difficult for our residents to get into Leeds. Even if they come by car, it's so difficult for them to park. And obviously, where they get off the bus. So yeah, I just wanted to see if we can look at having them in those communities.
Well, then we can agree the dates of the meetings as is. And then obviously, venues can be a TBC and deferred to a later meeting. Councillor Hallroyd.
My only thing is if we are going to go back out into the ward, how is the decision going to be made over which ward gets left out from the meetings? Because obviously now there's five root spaces. Whereas before it was okay because there was four of us. So, and Morley was being so central, they had the great pleasure of the town hall, which is a beautiful building. So it was easy for the two Morley wards to share that location, even though we did go to the other ones, I appreciate. But how are we going to make the decision on which ward gets left out this time?
Counsel Renshaw, last question.
Yeah, I just think it's nice to get out in the Outer South area and it gives you ideas that you can pick up from other wards of things and projects that you can do that have been positive and successful. By coming into the city centre, it's just so restricting, like councillor Senior said about the transport. Transport from Arsey and Robin Hood is absolutely non-existent into the city centre.
I think what would be beneficial for members as well is if the views of this live stream in comparison with how many members of the public turn up might be a better comparison for people. So as you can appreciate, it's easier for people to log on and see this rather than coming during office hours. So, councillor Chesterfield, do you have a question?
I will say, I take on board what you were saying about Morley. What might be interested to know then is those meetings that took place in the ward, where the people from the other wards travelling to Morley. Because the experience that I had within the Inner South was the attendees were very low, both from actually the ward that was holding the meeting and the other neighbouring wards. I understand travelling into the city is difficult, but in effect, I would find it easy travelling from my location in South Leeds into the city rather than trying to get through to Morley or one of the other ward areas on public transport.
Jane's going to come in.
Yeah, it was just to make the point that we will, across the course of the year, be engaging with communities through other methods. It's not necessarily at this community committee meeting. Like councillor Newton said, this is sort of the business part of the meeting. We will have other things that we'll be doing throughout the year where we will be going out to communities and engaging with local people that way.
Hence why we've agreed a budget for that purpose, for the champions to utilise places in the local area rather than this business meeting. And that can be an ideal forum for the public to engage as well. Councillor Senior.
Can I suggest that...
Councillor Dixon.
Yeah, just to say, I'm not really bothered where the meetings are. But the main point we've kind of always said is like getting to Middleton if you don't drive.
we've kind of always said is like getting to Middleton, if you don't drive to any of the other areas is almost impossible because they're just empty buses. So the fact it's here means our residents can attend here if they want but looking at today, they don't want. So we're not really that bothered because if people are not attending here today, they obviously don't want to be part of it.
councillor Renshaw, 10 seconds please.
Thank you Chair. I just suggest that next time you arrange it for a different date to the graduation event that's taking place at the university. If you can rearrange it for a different date and time. Next year.
Thanks for that feedback councillor Renshaw. So are we happy with that Clark?
Yes, are members happy for me to go with those dates and then we'll pick up issues around venues and times later?
Yeah, I think we've all got a consensus on that, thank you. And that's the close of the meeting, thank you everybody for attending. And thank you to council officers, cheers.